You ready? Okay, I'm gonna call it over to the call over time, Council meeting for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
President.
Bill Giffens.
There.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
And Rich West.
Here online.
Hey, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Okay, I want everybody to know that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now everyone in the room and online, please make sure your cellphone is on mute during the meeting. First thing I'd like to do tonight is welcome Jeanette Cerisi, partner with Jim Clevenger. And Jim's on vacation, so for those of you who don't know, he's a substitute teacher, lawyering tonight. Okay, first thing I've got on the agenda, we're gonna, since there are no minutes, we're moving past that one to approve, and Laura Walls, Marshall County Economic Development. Laura, are you online?
Do you want me to go over the changes?
Hmm?
Do you want me to go over the changes?
Just, we don't have, I don't have internet at all, and we're having, so he may be there, but.
We don't know.
I was talking to Jeff the other night.
Yeah.
So, I guess, Laura, if you're there, will you call back in?
It did that to me, too, at the planning commission meeting.
I think council will remember that, you know, we've been sitting on this MCEDC agreement, but we wanted Laura to be present to discuss it and be able to ask her questions, and she can answer questions. So, you know, if she's online, that's fine, but if.
Yeah, she's trying to call back in right now.
Okay.
Oh. Okay.
I will go over the changes, because last time I read this in public was a couple months ago.
Right.
And we've had some back and forth. Jim Clevenger and the attorney for MCEDC, Jeff Huiyan, is that how you say his last name?
Yep.
We all had a meeting, and as a result, this particular contract has been approved by their board, but obviously not by you yet. So, for the agreement part of it with the additional responsibilities that we asked to add, here's what we landed on. Point A, MCEDC will make reasonable efforts to assist client pursuing the creation of an e-Hub project. The goals of the e-Hub project are to locate a suitable site in Culver, educate stakeholders about the process, provide advice and guidance regarding how to obtain private investment in the project, provide advice and guidance regarding how to obtain public funding for the project, including potential Ready Grant and other funding opportunities. Letter B, MCEDC will provide information, advice, and guidance to assist in completing the Ready Grant applications that are due to be submitted to the RDA, Regional Development Authority, of the South Bend-LCART Regional Partnership. Item C, MCEDC will continue to participate in the Crossroads Culver Economic Development Initiative through membership on a subcommittee or the steering committee of the Crossroads Culver team. Item D, MCEDC will provide advice and guidance regarding the client's business attraction plan, including reviewing the current draft plan. Item E, MCEDC will provide advice and guidance regarding client's marketing plan, including reviewing the current draft plan. Item F, MCEDC will provide advice and guidance regarding the client's workforce development plan, including reviewing the current draft plan. Item G, MCEDC will provide technical assistance for the above listed services. And then we've got term and termination under item three would be effective through December of 2022. Compensation is payments made, that's a $10,000 payment. Will be considered as a compensation for performance by MCEDC for those additional services. And the reason they're referring to these as additional services is because this agreement is an addendum to the original MCEDC contract, and it's different than what the other towns are using that are also have a contract. And that's essentially what got changed. The one question I had for Laura that we haven't talked about is, I don't know what the current drafts are, if these were potentially performed when Jerry Chubbis was still the president of the organization. To my knowledge, I haven't seen these yet, and I don't know that redevelopment would have seen these. Sally, you would know if redevelopment had, and I.
Don't recall.
So, a lot of what we had put into this, we pulled from past plans that we felt had never been completed, or they're deliverables that haven't been completed to our knowledge. So, that would be my one question is, are these drafts sitting with MCEDC? And, you know, what point do we take a look at these? Okay.
Jenny, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay. I was, I could hear you guys earlier, and I was loudly saying to the phone, "I'm here, I'm here." So, Jenny, just for clarification, which items were you asking about drafts?
Yeah, the ones that are items D through F, which is the business attraction plan, the marketing plan, and workforce development plan. And these may have had different names in some of those past contracts, Laura. I think the workforce development plan may have been that veterans portal, I'm not 100% sure. I know that existed, though, on the last contract under Jerry. But it sounds like there may be current drafts, and maybe those are not unique to Culver, but maybe MCEDC, I'm not sure. That was just where my questions were at.
Okay. I haven't seen any existing plans, but I will, I will go back and look, but we have started working on, on draft plan, I started working on draft plans. I'll go back and see if I can find anything from Jerry, and I'm definitely willing to copy and paste if it's good. So, I'll go back and look, but we'll definitely be able to deliver this.
Saying it will be reviewed or something, like, I guess, language-wise, it's passive voice, so I wasn't sure if it was like, this exists already, or you're in the midst of working on those.
Yeah. As far as I'm aware, these do not exist. We are working on them now.
Okay. Okay.
And.
That's my question.
And on the contract, on the town of Culver agreement, under item 1B, the business expansion and retention services. Bear itself was a product that the MCEDC had purchased, and of course, the timing of it was very inconvenient, because they purchased it right before COVID. But our business and expansion and retention program still exists, but we're gonna get away from Bear. Bear was coming, the Bear interviews were coming into a business with 24 pages of questions, and our approach is going to be a little more focused and nuanced for each business. So, we're still doing those interviews, and we'll continue to do so. It's just, it's just not going to be on that, in the Bear software.
Okay. She's referring to the original agreement, you guys, that I emailed you that had Bear 1. Laura, what I have in front of them is just the addendum to the original. So, their 1B is actually Ready Grant stuff. 1 on your original has the Bear, but they've seen it. I've given them copies of the original.
Okay, okay, great. So, yeah, so on the addendum, under item 1D, as in dog, you know, the, oh wait, no, that's attraction, I'm sorry. I assume there's an, I'm sure there's an expansion. Well, if there, I guess I'm, I guess I'm not seeing expansion. Well, then you're getting other services that aren't in the addendum.
Right, that are on the original.
Yes.
You have expansion on the original.
Yes. Yeah, and I have both of those in front of me, I'm sorry, so.
You have anything else you want to add, Laura?
Well, the MCEDC board discussed this in detail, and Don Fox was at the, was at the meeting, and he contributed to the discussion, and the overwhelming majority, the sense of the board was, we, you know, we've dropped the ball, we want to make this whole, and, you know, and he was even throwing out, like, if we can't make this whole, then we should give the town of Culver its funds that they had given a couple of years, the redevelopment commission, and especially those funds back. So, this is now going to be an agenda item for our board meeting to track the progress, and for the board, and especially the officers, and Don Fox, your appointment to the board, will be monitoring this on a monthly basis. So, and Jenny, I get to see Jenny all the time now with our Ready Committee meetings, so I'll be able to, you know, keep her in the loop. I'm very sorry, I am not there in person tonight. I, barring something catastrophic, I will be at your April 12 meeting, and I will be reporting to you guys as a board a lot more often. I've been able to, I've been getting in front of town councils more and communicating with them more. We'll continue to do that, and we'll make this, we'll make this whole.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura. Does the board have any questions for Laura? Bill?
No.
Alex?
I'm here.
Rich, do you have anything?
I actually do, and just keep in mind that I've had the benefit, I'm Jeanette Cerisi, Laura. I'm the substitute attorney for tonight, and I was just kind of quickly given these papers, and I just have one question. I assume you're going to vote on this tonight? Okay, I have, I have one question. In the addendum, it says, the addendum shall be effective from the effective date until December 31, 2022. And then the services agreement doesn't seem to say that. It just references a renewal term that's not defined, so I just want to make sure that the service agreement matches the renewal term, that the service agreement doesn't kind of fall under some sort of automatic renewal, that indeed the service agreement would end December 31, 2022 as well.
Okay. So, is it, is it not possible to have the addendum expire at the end of the year while the other contract auto-renewal?
Well, I'm not, I'm not certain that's what the board wants, is, or they're aware of that's how it's written right now. And so, before they enter the agreement, I'm not certain that they shouldn't understand that the service agreement kind of looks, just from a first blush, to me, is.
I think.
Ongoing.
This came up during our meeting, because Jim Clevenger brought this up, but there's a clause in the original contract where we can give notice of terminating the contract.
I see that, but it's only for a material breach.
Oh, okay, because they felt like that covered it, but that was between.
And then again, I don't want to mess anything up.
I would be good with having the service terminate at the same time as the addendum, and we just sign another contract.
A whole nother contract.
That would keep it cleaner.
That's what I would think.
Yeah.
Um, so, maybe you want to kind of approve it on that contingency, if you're looking at it. Would be my only, just looking at this real quick.
That would make sense, if we're not covered.
Yeah, if you want to approve with the, and put language in the motion that, that the service contract will also end on December 31, 2022, we can work with our attorney, Jeff Huiyan, and Jim, or you, Jeanette, and get that language worked out, and then get the contract signed before, you know, in the next couple of days, or whatever that language is finalized. Or we can go back and fix the, fix the contract and get it approved by Jim and/or Jeanette, and then bring it back to the April 12 meeting, whichever, or I think it's April 12, whenever the next board meeting is, whichever way you prefer.
Certainly. So, I'm comfortable if the board chooses to approve the contract, that they would approve the contract with a clear termination date, the original service agreement having a clear termination date. Just to clear up that ambiguity from the outset.
I would accept a motion from the board to accept the contract with that caveat that we go back to the original service agreement and implement the end date of December 31, 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Bill.
Between the January 1st, number 31st, 2022, and when we get the next contract signed, take.
Well, hopefully, they'll start on the next year's contract, not January 1 of 2023.
Right, that would be good.
So, I think that's, that would be your intent, right, Laura?
Yes, absolutely.
You would have everything ready to go, January 1, 2023, based on you knowing that there's an end date of December 31, 2022, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, my hope would be that we have a contract finalized, you know, before December's meeting. You guys are going to be so overwhelmingly pleased with the services that you're getting, that you will be eager and impatient to renew.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion by Bill Ham, and a second by Sally or Rich, however you want to.
I've got Sally down.
Okay. We need to have a roll call vote, since we got Rich on line. So, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Clevenger. Mr. Ham. Mr. Richardi.
Yay.
Mr. Giffens.
Hi.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, Laura.
While I have your attention for a sec, do you have one minute for me to give a kind of a quick update on some of the things we're working on?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, well, and Jenny, I hope I'm not stealing some of your report, but the Crossroads Ready Committee met today and selected a firm to help, or to draft the applications for Ready Funds. We don't have a date yet of when those applications will be due, but we know that when we get that date, the turnaround's going to be really tight. So, we're trying to work ahead. The total cost of the contract is about $45,000. We, we think we got, Jenny was creative, I think we found some funding for it, but there was a gap of about $10,000. The MCEDC pledged $10,000 for that gap funding. The Plymouth Manufacturing Center that had $400,000 in regional cities funds in it, the manufacturing center sold the $400,000 loan, has been repaid to the RDA, and they are ready to redeploy those funds for eHubs. The regional city dollars will count towards a private match on a Ready application. So, it's my expectation and plan that we'll have an e-Hub project for Culver in Ready with at least $200,000 in regional cities funds as part of the private match. The proceeds, the profit, the net profit from the sale of the manufacturing center, the MCEDC board has committed 100% of those funds to Ready projects to be part of the private match. I think the private match is going to be the most challenging part on these Ready projects. So, you know, in the scheme of things, it's a small pool of money of about $300,000, but it will be a pool that'll be available for the e-Hub projects and other projects that we submit. The company that went into the Plymouth Manufacturing Center, Divert Inc., they're a green company. They're going to have 55 new full-time employees in Plymouth, and the average wage is $30.48 an hour. They started their build-out in December, and they hope to have the operations up in the next 30 days. They're kind of having some supply chain issues. But the good news is, the 55, the 55 employees, as they, there will be some new executives that'll come from out of state, but with all the housing projects that you guys have going on in Culver, I wouldn't be surprised if we have a couple of families in Culver that are working for Divert. And, real quick, the highlights from 2021, we had total investment announced, $80.2 million for business expansion and business attraction projects, and 331 new jobs. So, we're bouncing back from COVID. The unemployment numbers are really low, but the good thing is, we are seeing more people from Marshall County participating in the labor force than we did a year ago. So, while the numbers are low, the number of participants is increasing, and that's what we really are going to need to see, if our local companies are going to fill jobs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry to kind of take up your time.
Laura?
Yes.
400, you're giving us 200,000, where's the other 200,000?
Yeah, so, I want to preface this with, please don't shoot the messenger, but the other, the other 200,000 was before my time, was placed. And the MCEDC board, and I've gone back and looked through the minutes, because this was the question that's come up before, the MCEDC board was, they, in the board minutes, they were made to, they were, it was reported to them that there would be 400,000 for Culver and 400,000 for Plymouth.
We, for a brief 10 seconds there, we missed the where the other 200's going.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's going to an e-Hub in Plymouth.
Okay.
It was, it was promised to them as well.
So, you're saying 200 to Plymouth and 200 to Culver?
Yeah.
You're going to go back. 400,000, Rich, right?
Yeah, so, it was reported, it was reported that 400,000 to Culver, 400,000 to Plymouth.
But there was only a total of 400, not 800.
Yeah.
But to, to was placed to Plymouth. My understanding was, we were supposed to get 4, so. Did you hear that, Laura?
Yes, and I am, I am very sorry for, I want to be optimistic and say that it was a miscommunication or misunderstanding. I'm not sure what happened there. So, I'm very sorry, and I hope that, that that kind of miscommunication would not happen between MCEDC and the town council again.
I think you understand, Laura, that, you know, the council has concerns, and has had concerns over the years about monies and where they're going and how they're spent, and the fact that we don't get information down here, you know, and have personal visits to go through everything. You can understand why the council members, you know, are a little hesitant.
Right, I agree, and I, I really hate that I'm not there in person today, but you will see me at your, at your council meeting, you know, going forward, and, you know, and we'll, we'll keep in touch. And I'm, I'm, again, very sorry about the miscommunication on the 400,000. I'm not sure how that happened.
Could you possibly, if you do, come prepared in the April meeting with the, what we're looking for?
With the, the plans and the e-Hub location?
I think she's.
I'm sorry, there was a cutout there. I just, I want to make sure I understand this fully. On the April 12 meeting, what would you like for me to come prepared with?
If you can clarify the mystery of the 400,000, and why we're getting 200. What are you calling it for?
Okay, I will look for more clarification on that. I have looked into it, and what I have been able to find is that that, that you, you guys, you were promised 400,000, Culver was promised 400,000, and I think it came out, it came out once I found out that both communities had been promised 400,000, and there was only 400,000 available. That's why it was decided to do both eHubs at 200,000.
I think, too, I think that Jerry probably thought that he would move the 400 into another project in Plymouth that would eventually sell, and then he'd move the 400 to Culver. I think he thought he could just keep moving that 400 through projects. That's my guess, but we can't, none of us can guess what that was about.
Right, and I'm sorry that I, I'm not in communication with him to find out what his thought process was on that, but the, the, the good news is. good news is, we, the four hundred thousand dollars to regional cities have been paid back and so those funds are available and they will be available as a grant instead of, um, as a loan like they were the first two, the first two times those funds were used.
Okay. Well, you know, we appreciate your honesty and, you know, digging and, you know, we just take you at your word that you're gonna see us more often and be more open with us. We look forward to having that opportunity to work with you.
Me too.
We got an airtight agreement now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Talk about Blue Zones.
Okay, um, I sent you all, um, uh, the Blue Zones project proposal. Um, I think I've given you some background on this in the past, but just for the sake of everyone in the room, um, this Blue Zones project is being initiated through the Marshall County Crossroads Health and Wellness Committee. Um, and I have asked Linda Yoder, who is a co-triple chair, it's a, it's a very large committee and there are three chairs to that committee. Um, Linda was instrumental in putting this together. This has been a project in the works since early twenty twenty. Um, so there's some past history on it. I've brought it up in some past meetings because as you know, we presented at Ansela College when the Blue Zones consultants were here. Um, so there's been some active work taking place. Um, this proposal was put together because this is at the stage of preparing the project to, um, go into the ready grant cycle. It was submitted in round one, um, and it's, uh, sort of one of the premier projects of the Crossroads team, but because of the price tag associated with the project, they're in, uh, fundraising to come up with those matching dollars and the private funding that would match the grant dollars from ready. Um, and so that, what I sent you is going out to private organizations, all the municipalities, the county, the county as well. Um, and I, given the length of this proposal and, and the depth of this project in general, I wanted to make sure that Linda had a chance to talk to you and then if you have some questions, um, the request from the municipal world is that, uh, the municipalities consider twenty-five percent of the ARPA funding. Um, and as you know, from Culver's ARPA funds, that would equate to about seventy-five thousand dollars for us. Um, and they're making that same request of the other municipalities. That was sort of a number they came up with to, um, figure out how to make what they need. Uh, but they're also approaching private organizations like Ansela College, uh, the hospitals, et cetera. Um, so the, the other side of this funding request is ready grant dollars have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-five, I believe. So if we commit funds and it doesn't have to be ARPA funds, um, you know, that was just what they were using as a formula to, to figure out the requests they wanted to make. Uh, we could do that over a period of three years if we want to. It doesn't have to all be upfront, so it could be budgeted as well. Um, but I wanted you to take some time to read through it and hear from Linda and ask any questions you might have and you can make a decision tonight or you can make a decision at the next meeting. Um, but I'll turn it over to Linda.
As Jenny said, um, this has been, um, a process that started two years ago. In fact, it was February fourteen of twenty twenty, um, when we first had a kickoff session with about a hundred and thirty people out at Swan Lake to learn more about what Blue Zones was all about. But to go back even further, this actually started, this conversation started with Stellar when we were working in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen with the Indiana State Department of Health. Uh, we had, um, seventy-five thousand dollar grant available to us and we were all looking at ways to make the best use of that in the county. And, um, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. Um, that's not a lot of funding. Um, in the scheme of things, to move the needle in a huge way, right? One of the first projects we proposed was to reward people for making healthy choices and they said, how does that differ from any other project that, you know, kind of rewards people for, that are already doing the right thing for doing the right thing, right? So that started a conversation about what can we do in a different way? And as we met as a committee, we've got a lot of really great things going on and with, with our hospitals in the county, um, both Beacon and, and, um, San Juan Health System and so on, doing great things, but it's pockets of things. And what we were really, really looking for was something that was comprehensive, because if you look at our county health statistics, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, if you look at those, um, our numbers are going in the wrong direction. Uh, we have high obesity rates, high smoking rates, um, high diabetes rates, all of those kind of kinds of things that frankly put us at more at risk, um, when COVID did hit our communities. But, uh, but those have been with us for a long time and for all of the good things that we've been doing, we're going in the wrong direction. Last year we went from, let's see, Indiana is ranks forty out of fifty states in some of our health rankings. Marshall County in the Indiana, we ranked sixty-one out of ninety-two until last year we dropped to sixty-four. So we're going in the wrong direction. They're gonna release, um, this year's results will come out tomorrow, so we'll be watching pretty carefully to see what happens, but that's bad news for all of us. Our life expectancy is decreasing rather than increasing, um, just all sorts of things that are happening that are affecting not only, uh, personal health and wellbeing, but also affecting our economy too. So as we looked at, um, at different solutions, different ways, a framework where we could kind of, can really start to address some of these things, it was actually our friends at Okra, um, that mentioned Blue Zones to us first and we started to look into that. And, um, what we really like about it is it is a systems approach. It is results driven and they have, um, taken this model into sixty-one communities so far and they're showing results. What the measurements they're using, they're showing the results in a lot of the same areas that we're struggling with. So that was really attractive to us. Um, but we did spend a lot of time, um, talking to those other communities. We started out, um, after we all caught our breath, you know, after Kevin and caught our breath a little bit, we interviewed four of those Blue Zones communities and we strategically picked communities that were in different stages with Blue Zones. We wanted to hear from them, where they were at in the process, how they worked with the team, what kinds of things they, um, would do different, you know, what, what kind of results were they seeking for, all those sorts of things. They were overwhelmingly enthusiastic, every one of them. We interviewed, um, um, Revard, uh, North Carolina. We interviewed Taylor University, Taylor University of Indiana. They wanted to be the first Blue Zones campus. Uh, so they were just coming through the exploratory phase. They submitted, eventually submitted a grant to Lilly Endowment, but they wanted to start, um, incubating, um, rural health physicians. They wanted to incorporate Blue Zones into their curriculum, have their students engaged in the community in this work, gain the expertise of the national experts that would come in as a part of it and then hopefully build those strong relationships that would, um, have their students thinking about, uh, rural communities as an option for their career. Um, we interviewed, um, let's see, Potawatomi County out of, um, Oklahoma. Um, again, they have been with them. They had just signed, they had been through the first three years and then signed in a new seven-year contract. Um, so they saw enough results in that first period, uh, that they wanted to sign on again. And then we talked to Albert Lee Minnesota, a community very much like ours, a county very much like ours, um, but they were the pilot communities that had the most experience. Um, we eventually, um, last year in last November, we went to Revard, we took a bus and took about, uh, thirteen people up there, um, to visit with their community leaders to get a little more in the weeds about, um, how that worked for them, what kinds of things they learned along the way, what kind of advice they would give to us. Um, so it's been a long process to evaluate this. We know it's a big commitment. Um, but we also heard from a lot of those communities that wanting, they wish they would have done different with Start Center. Um, and they wish they would have put more resources up front than they did originally. So, so those, uh, we have pretty, um, pretty positive feedback, um, from all of those folks. So what this looks like right now, as Jenny said, um, we're at a point where we need to, we need to make a move one way or the other. Um, so we, um, have talked about this ready grant. We've, um, talked about positioning Marshall County for that. As Jenny said, if we're able to secure enough funding to go to Activate Two, that puts us in, um, Activate Two is where they start to bring in those national experts. Um, they, um, focused on policy to begin with because this whole framework focuses on three things, policy, people and places, the places where people spend most of their time during the day, workplace, um, schools, um, grocery stores, you know, all of those kinds of places. Um, so they focus in on those areas. They, um, concentrate on connecting people with each other. Our faith-based organizations would be a, a part of this initiative as well. Um, so that gives you some sense of, um, of the kinds of things that they, um, would be focusing on as they come into the community. If we were, what, what we're aiming for, what we want to do long-term is to engage with them for three years and eight months, um, to do a full transformation. Activate Two, this next step could take us, um, could take us up to eight months of that, but anything that we invest in this next step carries over into the full, um, transformation. So there's no, there's actually no downside to starting now. In fact, there's a lot of positives to getting started right away, so that when the ready applications do open up, we already have the investment in this next, this next phase of it. Um, we have, um, all of the research that we've done into it thus far, but, but this next stage will show, um, commitment and as, um, Jimmy said, um, we'll counter that local match. Um, so that's, that's kind of, those are the basics. I think one thing that we maybe didn't include in the proposal or didn't, um, pull out is that, uh, this is a vetting process for Blue Zones too. Uh, we did go through a, um, community, um, assessment readiness assessment process, community development readiness assessment process with them last year. Um, we started that in about April and they gave us the full proposal then and the, the site summary, um, by August of last year. Um, but what they were doing was vetting us to, to see if we're ready. And because of all of the work that we've done with Stellar, with the Crossroads team, we've got the infrastructure in place that captured their attention and, and, uh, we, we received frankly very high marks on our community readiness. Um, I think they have a scale of one to five and, or zero to five, and we scored four point five on at, at least all of the leadership, um, categories. So they feel we're ready. We feel we're ready and then we have the ready grants. So there you go. But anyway, they, they, there is some skin in the game with Blue Zones as well. Um, there is an at-risk fee. Um, if we don't achieve that Blue Zone certification, we don't pay. Um, it's twenty percent for the full, uh, transformation that we would, uh, that they're putting at risk. So they're, they're, they're pretty sure we're gonna be able to achieve it based on what, um, we've done so far.
And I think one thing I didn't realize until going to some of the workshopping when the consultants were here is a lot of the money raised for Blue Zones is to hire locally for people in your county to implement all of this. So it's not all going to consultants, uh, the Blue Zones consultants, and that was something that was sort of an aha for a lot of us as we were getting to know what this is about, but.
Albert Lee really focused in on that, the sustainability piece, um, because they really do want this to be sustainable after they're out of the community, but, you know, the experts, it's kind of like a train-the-trainer model. They want that, that continuity within the community.
Also, have any questions for Laura or Jenny?
Linda.
A lot of L's. But there's a lot of B's here too.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Linda.
I'm sorry.
Still on Laura from earlier.
Judge Kobe. That's a private joke tonight. Sally Williams. Okay, what do we need to do now?
So, um, the request is gonna be for the town of Culver to do a seventy-five thousand dollar investment, whether that's out of ARPA funding or, and I, we'd have to, we didn't budget for this, so we'd have to do a special appropriation. It could be done in year one, it could be done over three years. Um.
Earlier about the money coming out of, you know, the various ARPA funds is, is the request seventy-five thousand from each of these communities or?
It's twenty-five percent of whatever their ARPA funding is. So.
So where's?
Plymouth, Plymouth will be a much more significant number because I think they receive probably.
Millions.
Two million and something.
Okay.
But, you know, Argus may be similar to us.
Gotcha.
I don't know how, how many ARPA funds all of them are getting and it doesn't, you know, our plan for ARPA money doesn't have this written into it. So it could be that it's twenty-five out of general fund each year for three years. You know, we'd have to figure out where to take it from with Karen's input.
But this first year, we got to do an additional appropriation.
Well, yeah, because we had to budget it.
When we budgeted, we budgeted the amount that, of ARPA funds that we received last year.
Right.
So that's budgeted. We would need to change the plan that we.
We're gonna use the ARPA fund before.
Of how we were gonna use the ARPA funds. And we may want to change that anyway, um, to allow ourselves a little more flexibility on the uses, just based on things that I've learned since we made the plan. So there's those, there, there's that possibility. Um, so, or that flexibility, let's put it that way.
So we really don't need to make that decision tonight till you figure out how you wanna?
Correct.
Okay.
I think they're just looking for the commitment, not necessarily.
Right.
Okay.
You don't have to decide which fund or.
So you're looking for tonight for a seventy-five thousand dollar commitment for Blue Zones? Just so I get that.
Yeah, and it's very Blue Zone specific. It's not.
Right.
Uh, ready grant specific, but it would be toward a match for the ready grant, but even if we didn't get ready, it's a commitment to Blue Zones.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Your mark seventy-five thousand?
Your mark seventy-five thousand.
For Blue Zones?
Yeah, for Blue Zones.
Can we just figure out where it's coming from?
Yeah, and we can do that if it does. ARPA funds, then do it over the course of three years.
Well, and I think that would be a motion that we do it anyway over three years.
Yeah.
Twenty-five a year.
Is this a motion?
We're gonna motion to approve seventy-five thousand over three years to be determined by you at a later date where the funds are gonna come from. And not necessarily obviously for Mark. There a second to that effect?
I have a second.
Which was made by Sally, seconded by Bill Hamm.
I think you have to roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Hamm?
Hi.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
And you voted nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Moving on, town manager reports.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, did we approve the most?
There were no minutes. I passed over that earlier. We don't have minutes.
Okay, uh, first thing on the report is just, uh, important upcoming dates of starting to keep track of those for my own sanity, but I thought I'd do them for you as well. I like the fact that Karen put states on the agenda, so these are all mine. Um, utility street department updates, the electrical vehicle charging station is now operating. Uh, we have not released it to the public yet because we need to get MACOG's approval. And they're just, for the knowledge of the public, because this was done through a grant, um, we cannot charge for two years. Uh, so people will be able to charge their electric vehicles for free for at least the first two years and then we will have some options for charging down the road. Uh, State Road Ten sidewalk and West Jefferson Street project, um, as I've noted, um, in the town manager report, uh, we're getting close on this. We did our walkthrough with NDOT. We did our walkthrough with Endot and the engineer and the construction company. There are a handful of things that have to be fixed, patching and some drainage issues around the Sitzma property on Jefferson, the entrance to Culver Power sidewalk drainage. There's a spot north of, northeast of the paddocks. It's in one of the residential neighborhoods where we have some pooling and they've come up with a solution for that. And then there's patching throughout the project area as well as sod that wasn't properly maintained that has to be replaced. So the contractor is in the midst of doing that before we close out the grant. All of that will have to be taken care of. Lake Max Phase Two, as you know, we are getting ready to start back up with this project down Plymouth Street. So you're going to see some signs go up, stakes go in yards, et cetera. I've written a letter to the residents to update them on the schedule for along Plymouth Street and the side streets. I would like your approval to authorize that letter. I gave you guys a copy on email and there's a copy in your packets there. Basically, I'm just letting them know the contractor's schedule, the fact that there might be some closures, especially when we go to do paving, there's going to be some noise throughout the construction project. And it's going to be a lot of equipment in and out of that street. So it's going to be congested for a while, and we thought we would give them a heads-up about that. But I don't want to send out a communication without your authorizing it.
Is there a motion to accept the sample letter that Jenny has written and authorize her to sign it to send out the, the residents for Lake Trail Max Two?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Sally to approve the letter that's in your packet notifying the residents along Plymouth Street about future work for Trail Max Two. Roll call please.
Mr. Hamm?
Hi.
Mr. Clevenger?
Hi.
Mr. Charlie?
Hi.
Mr. Githens?
Hi.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Motion carries.
Jenny? Yes?
I had a question concerning the letter that Tim Oldham wrote. Were you and/or Bob going to meet with him to talk about the drainage issues and incorporate some of that into the plan?
Yes, we are after we've settled. We're still looking at whether or not to regrade it. And if so, do we do it in-house or outsource it? Bob and Troyer Group are taking a closer look at that before we make a decision on what to do there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Lake Max Phase Three, no change on that. And same thing with Slate and Jefferson. Water proposing for Midwestern this afternoon. I did get the easement agreement from Culver Academies. I have forwarded that on to Jim because they made some changes and I will get that to you guys at your next meeting. If we're okay with the changes, then the academy's okay. We can finally sign off on that. I was okay with the changes, but I want to make sure that Jim goes through that because, you know, not my forte. So that will help us move things along on the potential water project. Peerless proposal for the new well. We have a slight change from Burke and Wade that I've also given Jim and that literally just this week. So that'll be another one we can get taken care of, but I will defer that to Jim or his substitute. The alley behind Ohio Street, the survey's complete. Bob would like to start getting that cleared and our hope is to get it cleared by summer. So I wrote a letter to the residents, that's also in your packet, asking that be done by July 1st. And in that letter, I cited the ordinance for blocking an alley. And I sent that letter on to Jim to review and Jim was good with it. But again, I'd like to have your authorization before sending that out. If, if we give people till July 1st, we thought that was sufficient time, even if there's bad weather in there. So.
You mentioned in your letter that the town will do it if they don't do it. Who's going to be the burden and cost them?
We generally have to do that. I don't, I don't know if we can fee them for that though, can we?
If you have to carry down a couple of garages or whatever.
Or a fence or something. We generally, if, like, we generally enter the property, but if it's a nuisance, we charge it back to the homeowner. We do have in our nuisance ordinance, the ability to find people if they haven't like moved their rubbish or, so I assume we could use that.
Well, so this is probably going to be an injunction situation where you may have some homeowners who are unwilling to move things and you're going to have to get a court order to do it. Sometimes there are attorney fees allowed for injunctions. Sometimes they're not discretionary. So it's kind of up in the air is how that will go. That was my, one question I had is we were kind of in that vicinity today, Bill and I and Chuck. And it's more than personal property back there. It's, there's like some improvements, fencing and maybe some sheds and things.
There's a couple of sheds, there's vents.
Yes. So I, one, one thing on the, the letter, I'd be clear to say personal property and improvements.
Okay.
Yeah.
And literally just the word improvements?
Yeah. Because I think if I were thinking personal property, I'd think maybe a old car or.
Something that's mobile?
Yeah, and improvement would include fence or shed.
Okay.
Yeah. But this is something that might take a while to get done.
Do you think July 1st is too long a time period?
Okay.
Do you think we should go longer at all or?
Well, I mean, there are some real improvements back there. I think people are going to be a little bit, you're going to hear about this letter after it goes out, so.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons we've waited till spring to get the letter out because we knew none of those improvements could be moved with a lot of snow.
Well, we were thinking to at least 90 days. If you think it should be longer, we could do longer.
I think that this is reasonable to start. You, you'll get the feeling of what you need to accept as reasonable once the letter goes out because you may get some, I can't get that fence moved for four months, once you hear from the property owners.
All right.
So are you comfortable with us moving on, authorizing her to send a letter out with that improvement?
Yeah.
And is there a motion to that effect?
Where, excuse me, where is the, Jeanette, where you're inserting improvement?
The last sentence of the first paragraph, right-of-way and any personal property and improvements located on the alley. And then there's one more location, third paragraph, first sentence, if you have, if you have personal property and improvements on the alley or in the right-of-way, they will need to be removed, so.
Thank you.
Everybody catch that? There's a motion to approve Jenny's letter to the homeowner with those changes. And authorize Jenny to sign. Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Hamm. Roll call please.
Mr. Hamm?
Hi.
Mr. Clevenger?
Hi.
Mr. Charlie?
Hi.
And Mr. Githens?
Hi.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you and thank you, Jeanette. Digestor blower, we're still trying to get quotes and timeframes on that. Hopefully we'll have that for the next meeting. And if we get it sooner, we'll email you that information ahead of time because that will get, get a pull for us. Meters, I sent you a quote and copied Bob who added some information on that. We are trying to purchase radio reads and meters. And the total that I gave you for that was 14,185. On your quote, that was the second and third lines. And as Bob noted, those 50 meters were years old but unused. They never, the company sold them to a town, the town never took, took them. So that's why they were less expensive than the other ones.
I don't know, Bob's on the call. We're also able to get those new used ones now, well, 36 weeks versus a year.
Yeah.
Right. That was.
And then the readers are now, the meters are later.
I make a motion that we approve 14,185 for 50 radio reads and 32 two-year meters that the community did not take. Is there a second?
A second, Bill.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Sally to approve 14,185 for the meters. Roll call please.
Mr. Hamm?
Hi.
Mr. Clevenger?
Hi.
Mr. Charlie?
Hi.
Mr. Githens?
Hi.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, under Park Crossroads Stellar Project, we finally got our letter from Okra. It's official, we've been awarded the funds to get that project going. We thought we'd hear from them in December and actually go into construction in the spring, given it's spring, I think it's spring, maybe not. By the time this goes out for bid, we'll, we'll look at doing the work toward, starting it toward end of summer so it's not being done during the busy season. And Okra gives 12 months to complete a project, so. Skipping down to town, town manager updates, or 15 Lake Shore Drive, just an FYI, there is a new public hearing scheduled with the Plan Commission for April. They're bringing in a new site plan and there's a technical review committee meeting coming this Thursday to review that. If all goes well there, it moves on to the Plan Commission, so it would come to you guys in May and you would be having a public hearing. So similar to the last round, there's updates to that plan, however. A comprehensive plan, I've let MACOG know that you approved their contract. We're going to get a schedule together and get started on that. MCEDC contract, you've already taken care of that tonight. And then this is Crossroads and Ready, which I don't really have any information on from what we've already discussed. The annexation of Tamarack Road and the housing development, just heads up, there's a March 28th training meeting at Sears on that project. Some of you wanted to know more of the details of what they're planning for that housing development and they share that with you at that meeting. And that is all I have.
I need to back up on one point.
Uh huh.
These readers, there could be some leveraging of another project, but that may have readers that do more than one thing. Don't want to spend money on these if down the road in six months, we're going to need new equipment that does multiple things.
Boom.
Because I talked about this and he said that could be an issue. So I'm just trying not to spend the money if it's relevant.
Should we look at how many? I know we have to have some now because we're running low enough. Like, should we see if we should buy fewer or?
Yeah, I mean, if we have an emergency, we're out against the wall that just don't bother spending on it.
Bob, are you on?
I am. What was the question? I couldn't understand it all.
At some point, we may need a different type of meter. But in the meantime, how many do we currently have and would we need in, say, the next year? Do we need as many as this order is for?
What, why, why would you say we would need a different meter? What's that? I don't understand that question.
Just in the event that there's a, multiple utilities on the same meter.
Oh, it's, it'll, it'll work for both.
I just need confirmation. Or CX or this, I mean.
Okay, since you guys, since you've authorized the purchase already, why not Bob and I talk and get together with the supplier and see if we can buy fewer and we can always come back to you with it? Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I hate to have it thrown away, so.
That's understandable. Jenny, Jenny, I might add, going back sometime, up in discussion, SERF does the same thing. If we were to select SERF.
Okay.
So, and I just recall that after what Bill had talked about, but knowing these facts, I think maybe we're premature on that motion, but if you want to talk to Bob and see what you can work out.
Right, we won't put through the purchase order until Bob and I talk.
But you might want to also contact SERF as far as that's concerned.
Okay. Thanks to you, sir.
Moving on?
Yeah.
You're done?
For now.
Okay. So Stellar, Regional Stellar, all that?
Yep, you're covered.
Okay. Department head report. Yes, Jeff, are you on?
Yes, I am. I have nothing for you guys tonight at all.
Thank you, Jeff. Eric?
Yeah, I got a couple of little items to bring up. I just want to thank you guys for the new air packs and air bottles and trained on them. They're in service and operational. And with that, we have some old air packs, old air bottles that do not drive up with the new ones that we purchased. So what I'm going to do, you know, rest of the things that we have that are not outdated so that we could sell them with you guys' permission. I sell it because it goes to capital assets and then when it goes there, whoever we sell them to, they'll have to be known by years they are, what age they are before they purchase them. It's going to be probably a reduced price because none of it's brand new. Everything we have is at least a year old.
I think that's a good idea because we're not going to be able to use those with the new.
We can use them only in a training situation.
Yeah, a training situation. So I would make a motion to authorize fire department to look to sell what they can, what they can.
How about he brings a list and then you can approve that list to sell?
That's fine.
We have, we have interest to other departments in the county, which we supposedly have to sell stuff anyways, it's kind of like offer to them first. And the other things that I've sold, that's what I've had to do is call county, all the other chiefs in the counties and say, hey, we've got this, we've got this, we've got this to sell anything that we have. However, that works out, but I'll come up with a.
Can you give me, can you get us a list by the 12th?
Should be able to, we should have one now, but I just wanted to make sure that we can go ahead and do it before we wasted money, energy doing that. So yeah, we'll have a list.
Present us the list and we'll vote on it on the 12th.
And prices will be variable, I don't know what.
I understand. I understand.
Yep, not a problem. Also, I need approval, we are ordering some new gloves and Novex hoods, then the price tag on is twenty-two hundred and four dollars. Gloves and sixteen Novex hoods.
Is there a motion for SMO to approve the purchase of the hoods and the gloves? Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve fire department purchased the gloves and hoods for twenty-two hundred and four dollars. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ham?
Aye.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, go ahead. Thanks, Jerry. Wayne, are you on? No way. Amber?
I am on, nothing to report back from you, though.
Thank you. Bob, do you have anything else on utilities?
I do not. Thank you.
Orders and commissions, land commission?
Got to have a great time.
I know you have.
We have we were standing room only last time, basically talking about four fifteen. About the state run ten situation. And was denied, so we are taking a different approach now. Don't be allowed to run his business out of there and trash the place up. The four fifteen Lake Shore. They put that on hold. We are going to hear that again on the April nineteenth. So if you're available, I expect that should be a good meeting. They've come back with a new plan, just got it this afternoon. Looks great. We're gonna be reviewing this on Thursday at our technical review committee meeting. Get a firsthand look at it. Would encourage you to come. Other than that, that's about what we've got going on with the Plan Commission. The VZA has been busy. And we've had we had five cases. This past meeting, we had one denied. One was put on hold. One approved with recommendations and the other two were passed, so you guys are doing a very good job there, so that's what we got going.
Are you involved?
We had a meeting yesterday. And the Eric Larson requested monies to assist with the Culver summer. Ten thousand for lighting and for safety issues. We also are gonna be meeting with about the the Tamarack and the housing development. This upcoming week. Information on that. Other than that, status.
Busy. Anyone in the room or online from the tree commission? Hearing or seeing nothing, let's move on to clerk's report.
I don't have any claims over two thousand dollars for your, needing your approval. Everything was operational, contractual payroll or CRC. I do have a conflict of interest statement from Amber Cowell for her work for the visitor center and then also working for the park. If you would approve that and then I will get that submitted to State Board of Accounts and to the Marshall County Clerk's Office.
Is there a motion to approve Amber Cowell's conflict of interest statement? Second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Sally to approve Amber Cowell's conflict of interest statement. All those, roll call, please.
Mr. Ham?
Aye.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Githens?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I sent a number of emails out today on Town Down Lake and to other listings. But just a reminder, so that it's in the minutes, Hydrate Flushy will take place the week of April fourth. And I did put a notice on, as I said, TGL, also on Facebook, and gave it to Jamie for the newspaper. Townwide garage sales are scheduled for April twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and if you want to be on the map, please submit your sale by four PM Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. And as stuff moves through garage sales to the Lions Club and across town to the Water Tower Parking Lot, the cleanup day is scheduled for April and just a reminder, that's for town.
Thank you. Bernie, your report?
Okay, so as part of the, as part of the unsafe building ordinance, Chuck DeWitt and Bill Githens and I went around and viewed some of the properties that are on the unsafe list. And some of them are a little bit perplexing because they're in the two-mile zone and the unsafe ordinance only covers within town limits, so they have to be addressed as zoning violations if anything at all can get done, or we have to convince the county to move in that two-mile zone to take care of them, but I think we've got a start. We'll get violation letters out shortly and probably give owners about six weeks to comply and see where we're at on some of these ongoing houses that have been issues, but now we'll get worked on with the new zoning or unsafe ordinance, so. And that's, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone present? Whoops.
Do you have any report on the four fifteen lawsuit?
Oh, the four fifteen lawsuit, the last that Jim told me is we're still waiting on the judge to decide, so it's kind of at a standstill if it will get dismissed from court. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for the question. Did you have something, Chuck?
No, just trying to get your attention.
Anyone in the room or online? Here for a utility shut off or ordinance violation? Hearing or seeing none, let's move on to citizen input. Anyone online for citizen input? If so, state your name and have at. Hearing none, is there any one in the room for citizen input?
Sorry. My name is Lee Marshall, I live in four-two-four, my surname is Soho. And I just had a couple of suggestions to make to the council. One has to do with Culver contracts and the other has to do with the TIFs. I was in front of this council a year ago, January, talking about the wonderful performance metrics when it came to contracts and and none of you agreed with me. But it made me very interested in Culver contracts, how they were negotiated, who was negotiating them. And there were some interesting things. And one of those was that Culver website actually has a link for contracts. It's probably because the website is a boilerplate for towns. But there's nothing on that link. And literally, almost all the contracts we have should be uploaded to it. The public should have access to them and know what they say. And, and so to that end, I would suggest that the contracts, all the contracts, any contracts, vendors, people that are public information and, and deserve public access, be uploaded to that tab. And I just want to use some examples of why I think it would be beneficial. There was a kerfuffle recently about the four fifteen development on Town Down Lake. There was a smart woman on there who said, gee, I went to the town website to look for the information to download it and it wasn't there. She did the right thing. She was going to the right place to look for the information. So any of that information going forward, even development information, rather than having people get notified and then they have to contact Jenny Monroe and we we can upload it to that tab and say, here's this notification, go to this tab and download, you know, the drawings or whatever it is. I've been interacting with Karen a lot, poor Karen, to ask her for copies of contracts so I can read them, look, and I just find it interesting, but you know, one of the things I found out, Karen sent me an asset transfer from about forty years ago for MediaCom, and I said, no, 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 that's not what I want. I want, I want like a I want a service agreement or a franchise agreement. And we actually don't have a copy of the franchise agreement with MediaCom. There's no copy. The last time you guys talked about it in public and it was recorded was in nineteen ninety-six. There was some ordinance that got passed at some point, but there's no copy of that either. And this is the kind of stuff, I mean, this stuff goes through my head if I'm trying to do broadband, you know, I think, what, what, what is, what do I have? What do I have with MediaCom? Because I see other contracts as leverage. If that, if that's expired, that's supreme leverage. But it's also a source of income to the, to the town of Culver. So MediaCom is paying rates from like twenty-five years ago because that, that contract never got renegotiated. We're, we're loose, we could, we could be making more money at this point. So there needs to be a central point where those contracts are uploaded and seen and reviewed and people are aware of expiration dates. And and maybe I'm confused, but our Main Street booth did, did a presentation at MACO about a development downtown. And apparently, you know, when they asked for support for it and people were writing letters, they went around and, and once the presentation was made, the town of Culver supported it, but it's, it's a secret. We've asked to get it. We're told, well, it wasn't a town-related project. So, you know, nobody gets a copy of it. And that kind of stuff should also be on the website. Things are being proposed for developments in downtown by any group particularly, particularly that's underwritten entirely by the taxpayers of Culver, that information should be available to us at the website. I'll never come back and beg you for this again. I'll just look at the website two weeks from now and see if contracts are being uploaded to it. Because honestly, I was gonna do it myself. I was just gonna create a website, you know, culvercontracts.org, something, do something similar to Town Down Lake and just have a sharing platform. But I think it's really, really, really important when you want public involvement. People to be able to read what you negotiate and not have to spend, I mean, I can tell you, I'm very persistent, but some of the paperwork I've chased for years, for years, and it shouldn't be that hard to figure out what, what goes on. The other suggestion about the TIFs. You guys know that Paul and I resigned our board position over, over a disagreement about the TIFs. And not to go into that, you know, sometime you guys want to have a big meeting, sharing information about that and, and talk about the town of Culver. But I think the feedback was that, you know, since it looked like negative information, that it wouldn't be discussed in public and no one would be held accountable. That was what we had a big problem with and what we resigned over. And thinking about it, I think I agree with you that you shouldn't be held accountable. And my suggestion about the TIFs is that someone be appointed to be the point person for the TIFs, kind of the babysitter of the TIFs, as it were. They could come twice a year and report to CRC and, and the council, make suggestions, follow what businesses come into Culver. And prove what land has changed hands or changed in status. And actually, not just know that that happened, but compute how it affects everything and other real estate deals that you might be negotiating at the same time. I think the person should be licensed. I think the person should be an attorney, a CPA, or a CFA, or some kind of combination and currently practicing. It can't be somebody who was like a banker a hundred years ago or, you know, no, currently practicing because that requires a high level of ethics and I, and I think we need that. And I think the person should have a non-cancelable contract so that it's never anybody's lacking. Nobody, they don't, they don't have to take anything from CRC, they don't have to take anything from council. Their job purely is to report the health and the status of the TIFs and how we might utilize them and report it to the, the people of Culver without being reinterpreted by anybody. And I think that, again, three major benefits. This person can never be threatened by anybody into silence. And I don't think anybody would even attempt to do it. The second thing is, is when Paul did all that research on the TIFs, in the end, he had a list of recommendations, steps to to suggest so that this mishap with the TIFs would never happen again. And I think in his resignation letter, he said, you know, when you pretend like something didn't happen, when you just kind of shove it under the rug, you never go back and, and look at yourself and see what you might have done wrong so that you don't do it again in the future. But he was never able to share those suggestions. And this would be somebody he could share those suggestions with. And I'm saying, you guys could come back to me and think we can share them with us, but I go by what's in writing. And your description of the person, people to be on CRC, your job description for CRC says you don't want anybody who ever tried to change anything. And this would be a suggestion for change. And so to go to a neutral person who would really assess it and think about implementing it, I think is essential. And then finally, it'd be somebody to talk to about development. I know everyone's gonna say, oh, we're doing all this stuff about development. For me, just because I love doing it, I, I call companies and meet with them about Culver and pitch Culver and you know, sort of my best partner right now is my sister-in-law, Kate, who's a Realtor. You guys, investors come to her, look for a deal for us. Happens to other people here. And you just get such quick feedback, but I'm not talking about somebody who's doing, you know, e-hubs or whatever. I have no interest in that because it doesn't bring jobs, it doesn't bring more money to Culver, you know, spending money, people spending money. I want to talk to somebody who knows how to structure a deal. So if I have an idea and I come to say, you know, the TIFs could be the source, maybe the equity source for this deal. That's where I want, that's where I say tell them to talk to about development. No one else has that experience and someone who's a lawyer or finance person would be able to have that discretion.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Wednesday, next, tomorrow, four o'clock. Alan Steele from the Indiana Small Business Administration will be at the Crossroads Business Development Meeting. Here in the council.
Okay, so let me just finish because I have just one last suggestion. And that's like people who have the background that I think do perfect to do this. And sorry, Jeanette, because I've never mentioned this to you. But someone like Jeanette's the reason, because she has major intellectual horsepower. Absolutely. And she's got a backbone, you know, she'd be in it and she would, she'd do the right thing. That's who she is. And I would, and sorry, I know you're so busy getting to do it, but, but she'd be the right kind, just to come twice a year and do this, you know, do this. The other person I would.
Wait, wait, are you talking about the economic development resource or the TIF monitoring?
TIF, the TIF, the TIF, the TIF babysitter.
Is this the same position that you're suggesting? That person is the same one as that development expert or?
Because what that person is, when that person knows about the TIFs and they know about the revenue stream from the TIFs and they know the structure of the TIFs, so if I come and I have a deal, I have an idea and I, I need five million dollars or four million dollars to try, try to put something together. You know, sometimes you can put something together, you can provide equity for, for a deal. And you need, you need to talk to somebody who really understands how that's committed and understands structuring something, and, and there's nobody really to do that with. So that.
We have Baker Pilling.
Not the same. Oh, I should point out.
I think she's referring.
Somebody in Culver, not somebody in Indianapolis.
Right, right.
In Culver, who's about Culver, who knows people in the county who can interact, who will be on it and pay attention to it and share information and is smart. And the other person that I think also has a really good background for is Gary Perick. And who I've never also talked about in town either. Like he has, he happened to step off CRC to do it because that would be a company. One person to be on council or CRC. As a member, and that, that sort of works with you because you could, sorry, Jeanette. That's, that's the type of person. And I, I, I think it could be enormously helpful, but anyway, those are my two.
Thank you. Any other citizen input? Paul?
I jotted some notes down. And again, my name is Paul Benedictus. I'm a full-time resident of Culver. And I think there's an issue in our town with council and, and our town government that just needs some immediate attention and correction. It's around the level of transparency to the public on the council's actions, activities, and initiatives. I believe this is a basic requirement owed to the people of Culver, the elected. I believe this is a basic requirement owed to the people of Culver, the people that elected. As my wife stated, we resigned from BZA and CRC last year because we couldn't work with the current town council. But like other people in the town, does not refer that don't work with the town council. Doesn't mean we stopped doing things on behalf of the town or for the good of the town or the county. We've been out there doing these things. But the consistent lack of, I'll call it transparency in the actions, activities and initiatives of the town leadership is really keeping the people of Culver in the dark. It does not invite engagement or feedback. And it actually erodes trust in the decisions that you're making. I'm going to give some examples. This is just the heads up to it. It's documentation of council and committee actions. I think the town website is the best example of the lack, I'll call it lack of interest that council has in keeping the citizens informed or engaged. The lack of town council minutes, the official record of your actions. I think the last ones were posted August of 2020, 2021, last year.
You know what?
And I, 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 I had nothing else to say for Karen. And I think she's the hardest working person in here. I am looking more at behavior and larger issues. It's one thing to have a month or two behind. The last CRC minutes were posted January of last year, over a year ago. There are no links to, you talked about the YouTube recordings to go and watch. There are no links to that. It's not an administrative oversight. I, I think it's a reflection on the council's attitude of behavior. I think it's a reflection of where it says is important to you. I call it a lack of accountability because it's really, you make votes and you decide things, but they're not out there for people to see and inform the citizens. It just appears it doesn't matter to you or you would have checked. It is, the, the town website is one of the best ways. It is the way that people go to look at things. And they don't know what you've done. The next is broadband, another example. I know last summer, the town leadership initiated a review of the town's four broadband services as provided by MediaCom. And we've all experienced it, the last seven days, four of those days, we've lost minutes. And it's just been, it's, it's not a, it's not a secret. It just reflects the whole town. But I can find nothing about it on what the town is doing on fiber broadband, on the town website or any of the published bits. I see it on agendas. I don't see any results. And just want to understand and know what's going on. I think, I think there's, I'll call it no transparency or communication of this and no engagement of the citizens. And that can be corrected. And again, it's a level of transparency that just isn't there. The last is economic development. And the fall last year, the town had two days of meetings with a pay consultant on the future of economic development. And that was a fall from other meetings that were occurring ahead out there. Nothing was made public about that.
Every single meeting since then, it's been public in a town manager report, reported in this room every single meeting. It's called the Crossroads Culver Team.
I cannot find it on our website. I cannot find it on, in minutes.
I'm telling you for a fact, it's been reported on multiple times. There are four subcommittees working on it. I report it to this group every single meeting. It's in the TM report. They may not be posted on the website, but they exist. And they're approved in meetings. So I beg you to-
I make jokes at times and if a tree falls in the-
I can't make you come to the meeting and hear the reports, Paul. But I'm telling you, they know about, go ahead.
This falls on me and I will take responsibility for it. The website is under my purview. The minutes are under my purview. I have a limited amount of time per day. And unless we have to hire somebody to maintain the website, there are not enough people in our office to take care of all the things that you are asking for. So I will work and do my best to get things updated as soon as possible and continue to keep them updated so that you have the transparency that you are looking for. I think you're probably looking at the wrong people specifically for the responsibility of getting this stuff updated. The council, sure, should they be looking at the website? Yeah. And that's fine, but there, please remember that there are only so many hours in the day for three people in that office to get all the things done in this town that everyone wants us to do.
Karen, I do. And I don't, and I turn around and I don't put it on the three people that are doing it. I would turn around and say, there is, there are, I'm, this isn't just Paul. This is an all elite, the people that I've talked to and this is what's out there. This is feedback. This is an opportunity. I'm telling you the lack of this out there. And maybe it's important that you have to bring somebody in to go and, and do this. And again, this is not about one person doing this. Because when I connect development, if you're telling me that all that, everything is done on Culver Crossroads, because I can't climb Culver Crossroads anymore. I can't find a lot of this because I don't see the minutes. I understand that part, but it is not out there. I would say it is not, it appears to be in the behavior and the, and the level of importance. It is not important at this point or it is of low importance. Put this out there so that other people in the town can review and engage.
I disagree with you on about the level of importance. This is very important that we do it. And I'll be the first to say and support Karen, there's not enough hours in the day unless we go out and hire a staff of about three or four more people, which the town cannot afford, to do a website and to assist people in the town hall. I mean, we've got a town of 1,300 people that's operating like we're Plymouth, Indiana. Period. A town of 10,000 to 12,000 people. We got 1,350 people, give or take. We do a heck of a lot more in Culver, Indiana than, than Lopez, Urban, Argus, Putty County. And we're doing the best we can to get the information out.
And, and I would say to you that I see a lot of money spent when you come to these, a thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, I never, this is the first time I've seen the website go, you know, be so far behind. It wasn't so far behind before. But if that's the case, it means Karen is going to get more inundated as more and more and more months go by. And I'm thinking, what is it to hire somebody and pay them $10 an hour to scan and upload, you know, contracts and minutes? You know, I'd do it for free. I mean, I, I'm, you know, back in the day, I'd say, Karen, if you ever need any help, come down and help you. You know what I'm saying? You have to ask people, you have to engage people and don't do it. And so when people try to engage, like the woman at 415, she's, oh, I'm looking, I want to learn. I want to know. And it's not there. You can't say to them, sorry, we're overwhelmed. And that's just not going to work.
We don't. When they request it, which very rarely, so 415 is a great example because it was actually a property that people were engaged with, did respond to. I got two requests to see the site plans. They had them within five minutes of requests.
But then the guy says, Town of Allen Lake. So everybody else can have them. That's why you've got no more requests.
Which is fine.
Right.
We can put them out there. But my point being, when, when we do have it and it's requested, but I'm not going to print 45 copies, stuff 45 sets of envelopes, pay the postage and labor for that because one, I don't have time. Two, it's costly. So it goes out. Most people that we send even the neighborhood letters to, very rarely do we get any response. So if it's getting thrown away, I can't force somebody to read it. I can't force someone to show up for it. But when we have it and we give it to them, we never stop them from requesting it.
Right, I wouldn't print anything.
And half of the stuff I get is, is this size. Boo, I get site plans that are so, the size of a poster. I'm not going to create copies of posters. If they want to come look at it, we encourage it. I even put it in the letter. So I can't force people to read it and engage though either. I can put it out there and they can engage with it or not.
I would say at this point, based on other citizens that I've spoken with, the ability to increase transparency is an opportunity. I'm glad to hear you say, Bill, that it's important to you.
It is.
It's an opportunity. And it's an opportunity to demonstrate that. I would go back again and maybe, maybe you've got everything for economic development or around broadband and what's been going on with Culver Crossroads.
Oh my God, we've been reporting on broadband in this room every single meeting.
But nobody, unless you're in this room or unless you're able to go through these things, you cannot find it out. And part of the people in this town do not go to this and they, they look for it. And they, they, when they have, when they struggle with what's happening with broadband, they go, what are we doing?
They can't access it. People, often people are still at work when these things are-
So you may not like to hear what I'm saying.
If they were to be, they're still being involved.
I understand.
And again, it affects, I really believe it affects the trust that people have in your decisions because they don't see anything behind your decisions. And they can't find that information. And I'm only standing because I have, I have this piece of paper. Because I wrote everything down because I don't want Karen to sit there and go, oh gosh, what was going on? I wanted to share this with you. And I hope it gets incorporated in the minutes.
We'll attach it to the minutes when I get them done.
I, but I also wanted to share because when you're given feedback, it appears to me, at times it feels very personal. And this isn't personal feedback.
I'm just taking it personally. I really don't care what you think.
I understand. It is not personal. A lot of all of us in this room are committed to having a better town.
That's right.
And that's what we're trying to do. The reason I wrote that out, so you have that. So instead of people coming in here and saying, okay, here's what we're working on or here's what I'm concerned about, and you never have something to refer back to. I suspect a lot of that can get taken care of. And I would, I will come back and ask about it because it is important. And again, this isn't personal. This is just about a better town. This is an area that you find an improvement and that's why we're just sharing that. If you have any questions, I mean, please, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input? Moving on. Council issues. What?
No, we don't.
Oh. I asked, I asked first. Yeah, okay. There's nobody else online, council issues?
Yeah, going back to that motion I made, I'm going to ask you if you think it's premature since we're still looking for the rest of the money. To Bill's point, the $400,000. Should we be signing a contract before we know where that money is or where that's coming from? Or get some kind of accounting of it?
That wasn't in the motion. I mean, who's in the motion was to change the, or add to the, what? No, then, into the original contract, the December 31st, '22 end date. That's also in the addendum. That was the most-
Okay, it wasn't.
It had nothing to do with that $400,000.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to confuse it.
Yeah.
I think, and I think Laura was basically saying the original $400,000 was guaranteed to two communities when they only had 400 total. So that's why they're going back to 200 for each. But when that building sold, that money had to be returned to the RDA because it was disseminated through the RDA as a loan and not as a grant. But the $200,000 would be disseminated as a grant if we take it for an e hub. And Plymouth would also get that chance to have a $200,000 grant. So I think what Jerry did, we opted not to do an e hub at the time. So I think, and, and Plymouth was the same. Plymouth was originally going to do it as part of a stellar grant. Well, Ocre told us it wouldn't qualify. So we pulled that e hub out of the stellar plan that Plymouth had planned. So I think at that point, neither community was doing an e hub. So I think Jerry put that 400 into the manufacturing building in Argus, but it was done through the RDAs alone. In other words, we opted not to do it. Plymouth opted not to do it. He went back to the RDA and said, can I still use the money? So.
And still earn.
Yeah. And I think if we end up doing-
Money's being drawn.
Yeah.
I think, I, I agree with Bill. I mean, we have an understanding what we think. But I want to hear what they think or what they did.
I think she's trying to tell you what they did, but she wasn't here for it. It was under Jerry. And I think she's trying to explain to you what happened and why it's not going to be 400 now.
Yeah.
I, it kind of degraded the prospect of what she was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said, you know, going forward, she needs to-
Get her ducks in row.
Get her ducks in row and come to us and tell us what's going on. I mean, we got to hold MCEDC's feet to the fire, which we haven't necessarily always done. We've just listened to Jerry's pontification and, you know.
I think you're also going to have to decide at some point if we, if we're going to do a ready grant for an e hub or we're just going to do a ready grant for these other, like we're talking about doing a ready grant for housing. If that 200 is meant for an e hub and we don't want to do an e hub, that's fine. We should let the RDA know that because then they could reallocate that to Plymouth's e hub if they're going to do one. And I think Plymouth is planning on doing one, but it's not necessarily, you know, we could or couldn't do one here.
You know, the point that I was trying to make to Laura is that we got our eyes on her. We got our eyes on MCEDC. And whereas, you know, our trust and faith, going back to what you're saying, Paul, is, you know, not there, we had that same feeling with MCEDC. And this is not a new thing. I mean, we've all talked about this each and every year. And, you know, even with Kevin on MCEDC, I mean, we were on Kevin at times to, you know, get Jerry's act together.
But I think-
But I was going to, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Kevin.
And I was here.
And, and I agree. And you was telling us what was going on. Bill, you got a comment? Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think there's still an issue out here that they need to explain. And I have, Kevin, maybe you have the answer.
This bothers me because it started out when I was representative.
Right.
The regional development grants were for $400,000 to Culver, $400,000 to Plymouth. Neither one were ready to move forward, like Jenny said. Jerry negotiated that, that it was supposed to move forward from there. What he told the MCEDC board and what he told you is he got the full 400, or excuse me, the full 800, 400 apiece. RDA never gave 800. The RDA agreed to keep 400 active and that's what he rolled into the buildings. He never fessed up to what happened there. I spoke to John DeSau, who is Marshall County's rep on this. And he said, it's always been 400 going back into the loan and then circulating back to the communities. So it was misrepresented to the MCDC board and to the communities. That's where it came to.
Okay.
The RDA basically didn't have to give it back at all. So Jerry did negotiate getting $400,000 coming back to us. He just inflated it up a little bit. But it, it, all the other groups that gave it up, RDA decided where it went from there. It just went out. So he did keep it in the county if Culver wants to use it, if Plymouth wants to use it, but he wasn't able to get the full amount.
So it decided to split.
So that's where it's come down to the splitting.
Right.
Because it was 800, it was 400 apiece. Now we've only got 400, so we're splitting it 200 to it.
Interesting.
And it's come up as part of the ready, the local ready team, not the Marshall County Crossroads one, but the Culver Crossroads Ready Committee has discussed it as a potential ready project, but not necessarily as an e hub. And we don't know if they would allow that. So our Quality of Police Committee and our Business Development Committee are considering multiple different projects. And that one comes up because we know there's available money. But it's discussed more as like a work share.
Right.
Or a hybrid or multi-use center versus e hub.
Well, to make you feel better, you know, Laura is new and, you know, here's somebody that was connected with MCEDC for eight, 10 years. And still is and was our original rep. And so, you know, that's why she's kind of hemming and hawing probably. Because she doesn't have the background that-
Right. And she wasn't here when all those decisions were made between MCEDC and the RDA. And I'm not sure anyone on our staff would have known either because they weren't involved in regional cities.[1786.22] He pretty much was.
I can't understand them, why they don't have a paper trail.
The RDA would have. I think the RDA would. I just don't think any of us have that from Jerry.
Yeah, I'm going back to consider the original source. And that's why we don't have the trust in MCEDC that we all don't have. Period. But it's the paperwork there from the RDA. I can't answer that.
Really have to ask them to be transparent with you and show you. She was dancing very much on the, sorry. Pass, yeah.
We got it. Let's go back to council issues. Mr. Hamm?
That's all I have.
William, anything else?
No, other than the Business Development Meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. I have nothing.
Karen, you got anything?
Nope.
Jenny?
Mr. West.
Our-
You've got Rich on the phone.
Oh, Rich? I'm sorry, Rich?
Nothing, Bill.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize.
That's all right.
Outside out of mind. You got it?
Nothing from me.
Good. Make a motion to adjourn.
Chop, chop, chop. I want to thank Jeanette for her presence and impact tonight on everything she's done. And also for going out with, meeting with Chuck and I today and touring the properties and letting, you know, coming up and starting what we're going to do with the unsafe properties and going through the checklist to get, get some things done in the future. So I really appreciate that. Also want to let everybody know, if you haven't seen it already, that the library is closed from basically this past Monday through, I'm going to say probably April 15th to maybe April 30th because the renovations were painting, were carpeting. We got to move all the stacks to do the painting and carving on the first floor. And Schuberg and Schuberg is doing the painting. And the carpet is coming from Rochester and named as Clay's. Clay's in Rochester is doing the carpeting. So we'll be open again sometime in the future. But Erin, the library director, will let us know and keep it posted on that. Last thing is, I want to let everybody know that on Monday, April the 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30, there's going to be a meet and greet with the contested officers in the county. There's five contested offices. The sheriff, the county council, the-
Commissioner.
Commissioner and the county clerk. And it's going to be held at the Beach Lodge from 5:30 to 7:30. Jenny is going to be the moderator and see what we want to say and run the meeting. And the public is invited. And we're just doing the contested, contested candidates that can vote here in, you know, in Culver. I mean, there are other ones, but there are other districts, so.
April 4th.
Monday, April 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30. 5:30, 7:30 to Beach Lodge. And there'll be postings on, there's always been, always, already has been an announcement by Amber on town, kind of like that it was reserved. And Jenny's going to have some more stuff out there in the next week or so. Other than that, that's all I got. Motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. Second to adjourn, roll call, please.
Mr. Hamm?
Hi.
Mr. Clevenger?
Hi.
Ms. Retardi?
Hi.
Mr. Giffens?
Hi.
Mr. West?
Hi.
We're adjourned. Thank y'all.
Bill?
Pam? I was grabbing for you. You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry.